So before you, you should have a copy of the violation file for this particular item. We have a violation 11 dash 21 dash A. And in particular, Park County, and it's against Jim and Sarah Nicholson. This investigation record for you sort of summarizes the actions to date that led to the violation of this. And is for you to consider penalties if possible, or if you want. So on September 20th of 2021, I spoke with Cody Schatz, he's from Engineering Associates. He's the engineer that is sort of running the show on the Patriot major subdivision. And we were discussing the status of the State Board of Control review for this subdivision. And as you know, State Board of Control is required to review major subdivision proposals and to respond with approval of the water rates and the water distribution. And so without that particular letter from the State Board of Control, you can't approve a final plan. And subdivision improvements agreement, which talks about the construction requirements for a subdivision, is approved at the time of final plan. So if you can't approve one, you can't approve the other because the final plan is essential as part of that final plan application. So getting a little bit of that background. So we had this discussion that the letter had not been received yet from the state. And during that conversation, we spoke about the rule commencement of a physical layout or construction of the subdivision and how that cannot happen before board approval. And the reason that came up is because it was brought to my staff's attention prior to that. There was discussion about the subdivision Jim Nicholson starting construction. And so we just made it clear at that time that it was not supposed to occur. As you may recall, you reviewed the preliminary plat for the subdivision and issued resolution number 2021-71 on the same date, the 20th of September 2021, with condition number six that states the applicant shall not commence the physical layout or construction of the subdivision prior to board approval, essentially meaning of the SIA, the subdivision improvements agreement. The resolution and meetings are available on the county website and in my office. And a recording of that hearing is available in the office of the county clerk. So following that hearing, Mr. Nicholson had asked for you to consider his subdivision improvement agreement. And that matter was left before you that afternoon to consult with the county attorney, if you recall. You did not take action on that subdivision improvements agreement that day, so it was left unsigned, unapproved. On the 4th of October, I spoke with the county attorney to follow up on this matter and indicated that he would not sign the subdivision improvement agreement for a Patriot subdivision until a letter of approval was received from the State Board of Control. And signing and approving the SIA and final plan without that approval would violate state statute. Mr. Nicholson literally walked in my office as I was hanging up the phone with the county attorney and I spoke with him in person at that time, verifying to him that the attorney would not sign the subdivision improvements agreement because it would violate state statute and our rules. And I told him he couldn't commence construction at that time. We did receive a letter of approval from the State Board of Control on the 29th. It was dated the 23rd of November. On the 29th of November also, we received an email from Cody from Engineering Associates indicating that he would be submitting a final plan application for the basement subdivision and the improvements had been installed. And so this was the first time that I had been notified that improvements had even happened. I wasn't aware of construction had begun. On December 28th, I mailed a notice of violation, consideration of penalties to Jim and Sarah Nicholson by certified mail. I then followed that up on the 3rd of January with another notice with a corrected mailing address. And so that's why there's two entries there. On the 10th of January, they received that certified mail based upon a return receipt that was signed by David Nicholson. On the 11th of January, I emailed Tony Reddiger from Northwest Water District asking when they initiated the installation of the water line for the subdivision. And I included that email in this change. On the 12th of January 2022, I heard from Tony that they started the excavation of the water line in the subdivision on or about October 5th, 2021. On that same day, I had emailed Trent Reeder, or staff emailed Trent Reeder from the Shoney Irrigation District seeking the date that construction began on their aspect of the subdivision. He had indicated that he will be promoting infrastructure, which is not part of the Irrigation District, but he indicated that he thought that would be in September. And then Irrigation Waters Infrastructure in mid-October. We also reached out to David McGee of MDU asking for the date that construction began on the gas lines for this particular subdivision. And they indicated December 3rd. On the 13th of January 2022, Mr. Nicholson appeared in our office and paid $150 investigation fee by check. We have a receipt for that payment. And here we are today to consider whether you wish to impose penalty or violation of penalty defined from this particular violation. I would note that the Park County, Wyoming 2015 Development Standards and Regulations, Chapter 3, Section 9, state the following: "Subdivision permit is required. No person shall subdivide land or commence the physical layout or construction of a subdivision without first obtaining a subdivision permit from the board. Such subdivision permit shall be constituted by the board's certificate of approval on the final subdivision plat. The application for a subdivision permit is continued in nature throughout subdivision review process." I'd also like to reference Wyoming Statute 185304, which is where all of it came from originally. "Subdivision permit required. No person shall sell land subject to subdivision regulation under this article or quarter plat or commence construction of a subdivision without first obtaining a subdivision permit pursuant to Wyoming Statute 185306 or applicable Wyoming Statute 165316 on the board of county in which the land is located." The reason the wording is a little bit different in the statute is because statute was amended in 2008 to remove the words, the physical layout or or the word construction. And the county did not follow up and change our language. We left it even in 2015. It wasn't modified to match that language. And so I have this before you for consideration. I would like to note that we did have Jim's draft subdivision improvements agreement, which was going to be brought before you for consideration. And he did sign and have this energized. And I just wanted to read a little bit from the subdivision improvements agreement. Because I'm assuming Mr. Nicholson read, but he signed. Number one, on page three, under other agreements concerning improvements, "All improvements shall be designed and constructed in accordance with the development standards and regulations and the plans, specifications, and the final plan statements." Article 2, A, Agreement as Covenant, "The county and developer agree to this agreement and all obligations contained herein shall run with the land and shall be deemed a covenant with respect to her too and shall be binding upon the parties except their successors and assigns. In order to effectuate this provision, the parties agree that this agreement shall be recorded in the real estate records of the office of the court and recorder at the developer's expense." And further, under Article 2, F, Other, "Compliance with applicable laws under the two, the performance by the parties through two of their respective obligations, provided ones, you know, shall be in strict compliance with all applicable laws and rules and regulations of all government agencies having jurisdiction on the property." And again, this was the draft subdivision improvements agreement that Jim signed and was ready to prove, to put before you. And so he would have been aware of those requirements at that time. This isn't really a public hearing, but I'm sure you might just speak to it, so.
Madam Chairman, Colin Simpson. I could direct her hill clarify the date that she said that she received the letter from the state engineering office.
Absolutely. I received it by email from Cody from Engineering Associates on November 29th. And it was dated, from the Board of Control letter was dated in November 23rd of 2021.
Thank you. Madam Chairman, members of the commission. I represent Jim and Sarah Nicholson. And I would venture that no applicant understands all of the 2015 rules and regulations of Park County or reads very closely subdivision improvements agreements. But really, the issue here, I believe, is what did that resolution need? Paragraph six of the resolution. What it said was that he couldn't commence construction until the subdivision improvements agreement was approved. The regulations, to me, in two different places talk about how the SIA, the subdivision improvements agreement, can be approved, should be approved prior to the final plat. Yet, it's being interpreted to mean that they have to be filed together or approved at the same time. And I think that's a misinterpretation. So if resolution number six says that Mr. Nicholson can commence upon approval of the SIA, excuse me, he believed that that was not far off, weeks in fact, from September 20th, not months, which ended up being two months for the state engineer to rule on that. And the Board of Control only meets four times a year. And it's a little difficult for a developer to comply with those rules and still move while you're trying to construct into a winter season. What is the reasonable interpretation of putting themselves, putting a developer at risk? What does that mean to maybe Mr. Nicholson thinking, okay, if I build and they don't have the subdivision improvement agreement, I may have to move a road. I may have to do something else, but no mention to him was ever made of fines for violation, see recalls at the review of the preliminary plat. You may have different understood recollections of that. But the, there was quite a while when the county was allowing construction prior to the final plat. That was to make sure that the final plat actually incorporated the as-built-in-the-ground. Because there's always changes when you're constructing underground. You find unknown things. And so I don't find Mr. Nicholson to be a vengeful or ill-will person. I just, he wanted to do what he could to construct during the winter season, believing that subdivision improvements agreement would be forthcoming. Really, anything beyond that, to get into the technical arguments about what the requirements mean or what they don't mean, or is it clear enough that the final plat is your subdivision permit? That's what the regs need to say going forward. This is your subdivision permit. The SIA, the subdivision improvement agreement, those two sections that allow it to be approved or approved before the final plat is section five under Phase Major Subdivision Development, section five D on page 71, shall be entered into for each phase before the final plat for that phase is approved. Subdivision improvements agreements, subsection C, page 84. No final plat should be approved until the applicant has submitted and executed subdivision improvements agreement approved by the city attorney of the board. It doesn't say that it has to be, when it has to be approved before the final plat, just says it has to be approved. So believing that that was going to happen, Mr. Nicholson moved forward with that. And we would ask that if you do find it necessary to fine him the minimal fine of $1,000, note that that the improvements are in place and that all the other, all the other permits have been approved. There's a long list of those, including the Shoney Irrigation District Public Works. Maybe subject to a final review, not quite sure about that. Gas, utilities, other things, those have all been approved. So the things that wouldn't move were constructed. And they're still there. And we would ask that they recognize that the risk that Mr. Nicholson takes by not constructing and going into another construction season also is and his belief that that SIA would be forthcoming pretty quickly would allow you to give them a break.
So Colin, technically, yes, he is in violation because it, you know, it says unless it's approved, you can't commence construction. But why he was, it's been a bone contention with me forever. And it's the Board of Control that is holding these things up. They meet only four times a year. Well, let's start meeting six. Because there is, especially up in this part of the country, oh, this part of the country, you got a construction season. There's only X amount. It's about acre growing season. And so we fought with that for years and we had moved things forward without that approval from them. And that was the only thing that was, to my knowledge, that was holding up this approval of this SIA was a letter from the Board of Control. So it is definitely something that I would like to see us be able to address.
Yeah, Mr. Simpson's arguments are very valid as far as I'm concerned. But it is apparent that Mr. Nicholson did violate the intent of the resolution. And to a certain degree, also violated state statute when it says a subdivision permit required, no person shall subdivide land or commence physical layout or construction of a subdivision without first obtaining a subdivision permit from the board. And which we didn't do that for no reason. And Mr. Simpson's arguments are valid to the extent that there is some ambiguity in the interpretation of our rules and regulations. So anyway, with that being said, I also understand that too. It says that we have the ability to levy up to $750 per day for violations. But it doesn't say what the amount can be. And so I'm going to go ahead and throw it out on the table here if I make a motion. And Joey delivered the letter, was mailed on the 28th, state mission title, remember the date, Mr. Nicholson. Declaration of violation, 29th or 30th. It doesn't really make sense. So anyway, I can understand Mr. Nicholson's position. He's fighting weather and there's a lot of bureaucratic red tape he has to deal with. And he thought, well, you know, I need to go ahead and get this stuff from the ground or I'll be over there until probably next spring. And that's going to put my way behind the eight ball. Now, he full well that when he did this, he was doing it at his own risk. Your assumption, also you were going at your own risk? Okay. So with that being said, I'm going to make the motion that we levy a fine of a dollar a day to bring a total of $21.
Second.
So moving second in to have a penalty or impose a penalty on Mr. Nicholson for adding up to a dollar a day for the 21 days.
Just a quick question of the investigation, feels that something that we always help a lot of these subdivisions, so.
So in order to proceed with a permit application, which they are proceeding with their final plat application, we required a $150 fee as part of the violation.
Okay, for the word being used.
Yes, as part of the rule. Any further discussion on the votes we've been in front of you? Are you in on all those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not more than a day. What did you say?
I said see you. He said hopefully not more than a day. Oh, please, Mark.
Let me ask you a question. They all love you. They have good crowds.
Yeah. We can't say we don't have participation.
Depends on what the topic is.
We start, if you guys brought back your finding, your finding authority, you might have.
Okay, with that, our next thing on the agenda is an update from the Park County Library. On the library, you ready?
Wonderful. Well, first, thank you very much to the listeners for letting me hop into your meeting and give a real quick update. I'm hoping that'll be a nice break for you guys. And you guys are just jammed with things all the time. So basically, I realized, you know, I haven't come up in front of you since the budget, of course, but the talks never fun for anyone. So I thought I would just come and give a nice little update of what the library's kind of been doing for the past year and what we're planning for this coming year, just so you're all aware of it. And so just a nice little fun recap of, I get it, if you ever get that. And first I have to say to Molly, where's Molly? I emailed her in butter, so she's fabulous. So I appreciate her. She agreed. Yeah, she's agreed. So I just, a quick highlight of some of the things that we've been actively doing at the library. One of the things that you guys are aware that we finished the wage study and all job descriptions have been rewrote. And we implemented a line with the county trade and staff system. And the staff are very appreciative of all of that. And we've been keeping up to date with that. We implemented a few wage compensations to get everybody up to the norm of the county. And that's been a real staff morale boost for everybody. So we're really appreciative of that. And we created a new website. We've improved our social media presence. And we're regularly in the newspapers and the radio, making you proud, including Enterprise for Cody. And the radio. And we're in the radio station. I actually have to invite you to have this again. But yeah, so it's been nice getting out there in the public. And, you know, we've created some great partnerships with one of the organizations around Park County. And we're going to continue to grow that. And probably our most well-known one this year was the, with U-Dub Ag Extension. The garden is amazing. And we're planning lots of things for this coming year to do with the garden and outreach. And we did a story walk along the county complex. And that's really popular. And I just love that. And the kindness benches that were approved in the complex, those are out and all installed. And people are sitting in and enjoying walks whenever we have nice weather. So it's going to be great. And, you know, the library's been, like I said, connecting with a lot of community partners and doing activity and outreach with them. And that's probably the biggest change, I think, for the Park County library system this year has been our outreach. Your findings and all sorts of events. And I kind of gave a quick, just some of the popular ones that we've kind of been to this year. We've been at home shows like Late Run. We were at the fair for the whole week. We put the TC Labor Day Parade. We had a float there. We did the Cardinal at the Rex Center. We did the L.A. Parade in Powell. And Yard Mill at John West's Al Days. And that's going to be our continual focus is to just keep going out and doing outreach and not just being in our own libraries, but being out in the world. We went to Clark. It was the whole day there at the Gallaghers Corn maze. And so they asked us to come back again, so we'll be doing that regularly during the fall. We just increased our programs. We had like one of our great programs was Craig Johnson Caleb is all library sales. A hugely popular event for us. And of course, as you know, the Penna Library Architects, and we're working with them. They actually just last week sent some preliminary kind of 3D images that they're working on. And they did a site survey. And so that's progressing and we'll hopefully get more information from them. And so with that, the Library Foundation, there's been a bill letter that asking, and we received a lot of donations for the Penna Library project. So it's moved along and really positive. And then just a lot of internal efficiencies that's been happening at the library a lot more. As I mentioned the last time during the budget, when staff leaves, I'm reevaluating. And if we've done that, we've had some vacant positions right now that we're rethinking of how best to utilize them. And so our first instinct is not just to rehire, it's to reevaluate. And that's kind of the work we do at all the libraries. And then coming up for this year, what we're doing is that we've received a couple of grants to the state. And we have a Wyoming Library Business Grant that we just implemented. We have a business station that is specifically geared for local small businesses and entrepreneurs. So they come to the library, get free resources to help with their businesses, and they have access to all of Wyoming state business leaders and other, you know, Women's Business League and everything to come in and use those resources. We have a laptop for them. They could use our projector. We have a light box to take pictures and sell their products on Etsy. So all that's for free to help businesses. And we'll be doing more of that and going out to things like Rotary and Board Cody and PEP to do that and providing more resources for them. And we also received a creative aging grant and we're implementing that this week. And it's a painting workshop, progressive painting workshop for 55-millimeter, come and get it free. And come and learn the paint. And we'll be doing that. And it's really popular. We have a waiting list that will be doing a second workshop. And we are doing the seed libraries county-wide. And we just finished advertising for our seed library logo contest. We received five to three entries. And so that'll be the public will be voting for what seed library logo they like the best. And we'll be starting that in March. So we'll have seed libraries out for people. And one of the things that we're working on is improving our library policies. Because they're old and they need to be addressed. And again, we're going to make sure it's more efficient and works better with the library and the county. And everything's legal and correct and it's easy to understand and staff. So those are some of the big things that we're working on and just improving the library in general. Except more outreach, one of the projects I'm working with the Library Foundation is to get an outreach fan. And so we'll be getting a mobile unit for the county. And then that way we can go to places like Clark, Milwaukee, and the South Fork Way out the back. And Ralston and everything. Yeah, providing. We're going to take the library to that. So they don't have to come to us. We'll go to that. So that's just kind of excellent. Just wants to provide a little highlight of what's going on at the library and kind of what our focus is.
I'd just like to add that we're delighted with Karen's work. She has really taken hold of this job. One of the things that I said to you all before is libraries should be economic and social multipliers. They should make communities say, "Sir, better." And to be the great levelers so that those of us who are crazy can help those who are. And I think we're well on our way to doing that in Cody, Powell, PC. And maybe even Clark. Do you guys have questions? Any questions?
Appreciate the update. I do want to point out that the outreach programs are great to do, especially if you're dealing with kids as sort of the future users of them to pick up books and stuff to tackle. It's a tough move, but I see it happening once in a while. So we should do it for any, get the library outside of Black.
Yeah, yeah, we're a big county. And so we just, we got to go all over. And in fact, I have full plans of taking the outreach fan, the yellow stuff, I mean, we should be there. That's our county too. Okay, and we'll be everywhere. There you go.
All our rest is the work. If you go up there and wander through, it's busy. You know, I've been surprised that you try to go because at least the part of the lot is busy. That's great. That's what we want.
Yeah, the purpose of the library is to serve the county. Built in the county and that's our sole focus is to be an asset for the county. Appreciate you. You'll get a little break for the next thing.
About two minutes.
All right. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Have you guys been on the work of the day, haven't you? I'm an old school. I'm lonely yesterday. I'm on the auto road. How's the day? I'll just pray and work you on top. And then Colleen, I'll give this to you in a minute.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, so I have stuff on our agenda.
You guys need a second to take a breath?
It'll be a nap time if you let it go too long. Okay.
And proper with the Clark Forest Conservation District, annual report.
Okay, I just wanted to give you a quick update that most of the, most of the staff visiting as far as the elected officials visiting for you guys. And it was very, it was very, very well, it didn't work that well last year. Our one-page summary, which is, this is just a PowerPoint presentation of what one-page summary was like, did go out to all the Park County legislators as well, so they tried to keep them apprised of where we are and what we're doing. As far as our public education, last year we attended all of the annual meetings for all of the irrigation districts with the exception of Willwood. And Willwood canceled theirs because of COVID issues. So we didn't wind up going there. We attended and presented at the Big Horn Basin for a year-long meeting. And when I talk about presenting, what we talk about, what we talked about, what we're continuing to talk about is what we're doing with work group three. I did at the far field meeting, we talked a little bit about subdivisions and that sort of thing, because primarily they were, they were ag users that tech. And also, we talked about at the level one watership study that we're trying to get underway for the Cody and Powell districts. We did a small acreage workshop, I was already reporting to you guys on that, that worked out great. We're in the midst of planning the next one. We're hoping to have that in March at Fairville. And Jeremiah Bartman's working with us to get some of that stuff lined up. One of the issues, one of the big handouts that we're constantly getting hammered and asked for, and I think it'd be a worthwhile endeavor to get, is Burnyards and Backyards several years ago put out a full magazine on irrigation associated with small acreage. And we wanted to get a reprint of that. We'd like to get 2,000 issues of that. The kicker is the print cost of that, to do that, it's about $4,500. So we're working together right now, trying to figure out ways to, to get that accomplished because none of us have anything hard, hard copy left. They've all gone off the door because it's been a popular thing. So we're working on that. We have primarily associated with the work group three process. We presented to the, this is under the watership plan and subsequent updates to the Power Rotary Club, the Cody Rotary Club, Cody Conservation did that one. And we, we did also the Cody Optimists Club. And we're kind of starting to hit the service organizations along with that watership plan. Because last year, it just didn't work out to have a watership tour. There were too many ups and downs and everything, and all the other stuff. And it's, works really well to go and talk to people like the Rotary Club and the Lions and folks like that. Because you talk to one of them, it's like talking to 10. Because those guys are out and about in the community and they talk to each other. And so, it's really, I think that's a, a pretty good use of our time, is to go try to talk to those guys about what's going on. And then, because of all the interest and the rapid development that the counties are going through, I went and talked to the Park County Realtors and went to Red Soil Survey, which is the tool that I use to look at the soils and talk to them about how it works and how useful it was. And I said, you guys, I don't expect you to go home and use it tomorrow, but I would like you, especially if you're dealing with ag folks, to tell them about this and I'd be more than happy to walk them through, because there's a lot more tools available than what I used to present was to the, the county to plant in. And I said, it's really a pretty useful tool and if you're, you know, a new ranch manager or a far, a new farmer coming in, which is quite a few, I'm happily surprised, quite a few farmers coming in, that, that's pretty useful information. So we're trying to get the word out, how we get, how we get that out. You know, if you're a taxpayer, don't worry, pay for it, you might as well get the, use it. So we're trying to get that out. Unfortunately, for our outreach education to our students, we've been doing good. I didn't get the call to come out and talk to the little secret leaders until around the first of May. By the first of May, the schedule was so full, we're getting ready for all the stuff associated with the level ones tours and all the other things that we were doing. So we're continuing to work with that. I did have a hydrophonic garden, kind of a cool little garden. And I passed that over to Wendy Smith and she got it to the junior high in Powell. So I think that that'll be kind of a cool tool for those kids to play around with. But it was not the same as getting that playing with kids, which I really enjoy. Our big district project is the joint effort that we have between Cody and Powell on the level one study. That is working out. We're getting very, they may will work on some of these big projects with the community, it's just a luxury we've never had and it's probably working out well in this way. So, what we did do is we held two field tours, one for the watership, the ship development conditioners, and then another one for the potential contractors. And we were able to go around and we were very interested in making sure that these contractors truly understood the scope of the project. And that, that one took quite a little bit of time to plan it. And we had outstanding response from our local producers to come in, Reed. Those guys, I mean, those guys were stellar. We had some great guys come out and say, this is the issue as we see it. These are the things that, and Reed's particularly were wonderful saying, these are the things that we found that worked well. And I was going to see those engineers taking notes, paying attention, so. That, we could have probably done two days with a tour rather than more. We could do a full day tour on that, but we probably could have done two on that, but we've got questions and the level of activity we got. This is very good. Our water development, water, well, the water development is going to be taking one more look at all the paperwork and all the other stuff on January 27th of this month and then you'll go to legislature. So, we'll keep our fingers crossed, hopefully we get that, it's worth about having Reed now.
Is that in the August Waterville, or theoretically will be?
Now you're, now you're, now you're, now you're talking, we're, we need to ask the Lord, you can call those questions. I just know, we do everything in passive to them. And that's, like that's, like that's where we're at, the 27th is when they, when they do their, their last week, we need to record those legislative. So 30 left, we're good. In our CS practices, about $220,000 is what the federal government put into the poll for the topics listed below. I don't have a good feel anymore for match. We used to be able to say, on these kinds of projects, it was a 40/50 or, you know, whatever kind of match was. I don't get any information anymore, so I don't have any way of guessing that. I'm guessing if you figure 40%, you probably wouldn't be too far out of line. I know that there's a match on all of it, so. But this right, I'm positive about these numbers, that's for sure. Subdivision reviews, you guys are as aware of that as anybody else. Last year, we did 20, previous year, we did 27, last year, we did 40. So not quite, no. This year, it's gonna be substantially more in the way it looks so far. You can't, you can't tell what, what happens with interest rates and that sort of thing. We've made some really good contacts with some of the new people. I had a call today from a gentleman in the block, Pine Hill, the tree park. And I told him, I said, I know, he was out in the field trying to get something, then he was looking for a tree plant. And that thing went on for 20 minutes. And I said, I know you're busy as sin, I said, let's stop, you get your stuff done, I'll try to get my stuff done and then we'll get together. But I see, I see some really good opportunities with some of the, the new folks coming in to affect positive information exchange. He was very excited about it. I said, I'd really be interested in talking to you about good sorts of trees to plant, based, based on what I've seen from people trying to buy trees from me. I didn't talk about tree sales in here, because quite frankly, I've been so far behind, I haven't got it going. And the other side of the coin is, is, it's very, very difficult to find any. Lake and Oak, where we were planning on getting a lot of it, every time I looked at their site, they're down the next month. Oh, real forest service, if there's 15 species of trees, oh, our forest service is available right now. So, a lot of things are happening, they don't have the help to run the nurseries and there's a huge, a huge more station every four months. So, unless you guys have questions, that's where we're at. We are proceeding with the year-old red grant that runs out in July. At this point, we are starting to investigate opportunities for the next thing. Matter of fact, the meeting that was just that, and headed back to you here in two minutes, is to look at what are opportunities, where we're at, to pull this up this grant, how can we move on in the project and where do we need to go from there? So that's what we're gonna be doing in addition to dealing with all the irrigation.
Something real quick, if you would, you talked about the legislation and water development reviewing and then going to the legislators. If you would drop us a note, if you find out where that legislation is to, for us to help support.
Absolutely.
It'd be nice to know if it's in the August Waterville or if it's aside from that, where it is in the legislation, so we can help promote that with our legislators.
Absolutely. I would be, yes, any help that we could get, because it would be such good.
Just a, earlier today, we had held water irrigation district, was that a new one or?
Apparently so.
What's that?
Apparently so, because I don't know that term.
They were outside of Barrow, so that was one of the.
Are they, are they?
It's Grand Hoptown, I think, who was the one who made economy on that, I was wondering about them. Are we gonna have to deal with them a lot more now?
Very likely, because I, I know where, I know where that's at. But I didn't realize that was a special irrigation district. Did they set up their own little thing in order to get a project kicked around?
It went through to get their S U P there to get the approval and it was, I think Shoshone said that that's not us, that's outwater.
Okay, because that was not one that I've been aware of, so I will, I will find out more about that and what to know. Because, that I can see, there's not any place in the county that's been immune to being divided, except for on Congress.
And this is development that's torn off outside of Garland, so I figured that there's gonna be more subdivisions cutting in and maybe that's in their state district as well, so.
Okay.
That's my concern.
Okay, I, I will get that on my phone as soon as I sit down and we will make sure that.
I'm glad I educated you.
I am too. Yeah, this is, what you're talking about is the show.
No.
Things I have that are really fast. And then, you know, I've been out to this Fred's project, you know, that was one of the first things that was a cooperative effort with Gaven Fish that we went out and looked at. And, well, that was a stellar success, so I'm, I'm not, I'm not at all in doubt that they're doing a lot of good. That was some of the very first sediment reduction that we looked at. And it worked, it was wonderful. But, you know, we just, it's just hard to know about all of those things. And it's even harder right now where we're, we're still upside down and backwards as far as the office. We can go over there and go to work, kind of, depending on how many people are in the building, if they carry on about that. But we have not been able to have a board meeting in our old office building for a year and a half. I've been meeting either at the Willwood Irrigation District office or the Park County Bureau. And that doesn't sound like any big deal, but it's more stuff you have to do. You have to go out there, round up a key, you've got to put the note on the board that says on the door saying, we're meeting here, it's a public meeting. You've got to go through, it's just stuff.
Oak Water Users Association.
It might be a sub-district.
Well, it's nice to show, it's almost gotta be good.
It might be, it might be a sub, association of Willwood users, but Willwood said, that's who they had talked to. Said, said, they said that they, they're called the Oak Level Kneel District.
Okay, it's probably coming out of, from that one over there, from the edge. I'll find, I'll find out, that's the other thing we're dealing with is, Shoshone's got new staff. Well, they had Kristen, Kristen for years. I think she's remarried, moved on. So they've got new staff, had a hard time finding stuff. I'm basically with her, she's a new person, it's wonderful, she's gonna be great, but she's a young mom, so. A lot to learn and very limited, she's been working part-time because of her family. Our job boards got three new board members. We went from a board that's been the same, steady board here and now it's three brand new ones. And we've had, we've replaced Sandra Frost, was on for a short time, Jim Vannick replaced her. Wasn't his cup of tea, and we're replacing him with Colby Shaver, which I think will be wonderful. But finding that, a good solid early presence turned out to be a little bit of a test. I think Colby will be one. That's where we're at. Okay, thank you.
Hello, we have two minutes.
Okay.
Civil Service stated the present location has mailboxes and has sufficient space for an additional mailbox. Grable Valley Irrigation District stated this parcel is located in the Grable Valley Irrigation District boundary, but it does not have any stored water rights. In their email of November twenty second, they stated the parcel does not need a water distribution plan because the land has no stored water right. They home rural electric stated they have two electrical facilities to this property. The TC Fire Department stated they will respond to the proposed subdivision for any fire emergency. Park County School District sixteen stated at this time, the district does not provide transportation to or from school at this address. Park County Treasurer stated the the property taxes are concurrent on this property. By only game of fish stated they do not have any concerns of this project regarding aquatic resources. Our county leading pest, they stated the visit with applicant and given that there are no immediate plans for any disturbances. A long term not just sweet management plan will not be required, however, they do recommend the applicant follow best management practices for preventing the spread of not just speed. Our county public works concerning their access direct drainage to Park County Road three L E. And when you accesses intended to serve this subdivision will be required to get a right away permit from their office. And they further state they have no concerns with drainage and erosion at this time. We receive no public comments. Their planning and zoning commission reviewed this and recommended approval at their meeting on December fifteenth. They had several conditions. All those conditions have been met. The final flat review committee reviewed the final flat on January seventh, twenty twenty-two. There were minor corrections and changes that were identified and it was submitted corrected to us on January fourteenth. Subdivision improvements agreement is not required since no applicable utility improvements or drainage improvements or other improvements. Identified independence allowing regulations are either proposed or incomplete. And that was the findings for you and recognition.
I just wanted to clarify, looking at this. You get something done, but they started it in October. Is that correct? From what I'm reading, and then it goes through the MTC planning and zoning and then the Park County planning and zoning commission and here we are. This is persistent. Okay, so make sure I was reading these things. I know we're over. I mean, hopefully you wouldn't take that part of your.
She's pushed this through. Yeah, it hasn't been one of the stragglers.
I didn't even give my thought.
Okay, it's a motion before the board. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh. Ten, no, yeah. Thank you, thank you. Shall we have a break?
Over there. What is this, sir?
Probably seven.
When it starts to cast, it's really important, I think, we have done.
They have no idea. I love to worry about those. I don't know how they know their stuff. No idea. They have a lot of implications. I am sorry. 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 I am sorry.
Are you? Yeah.
I think we can start with the one that's already. Three conservation district.
Such a funny.
Thousand forty-one, okay, and he'll let me off.
I think they're allowing us to start with the chairman. He sent Molly the annual summary, so you guys had a chance to read it, so we can have to go over it. Do you have any questions on that? Yeah, maybe. We'd be more than happy to hear some. We're trying, we're trying. The one thing we just found out right there, we got a lot.
Hey, Richard Leo, could I? I have a heck of a time hearing in the background. It's just kidding me where I can't hear. Thank you.
This year, we have secured, have not expended all of the effort, we have secured a hundred and fifty thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollars eleven cents in grants. That includes the funding for our employee through January. The WBA funding, which we're going to use for the well testing match for the President's Department or the Conservation District. The Cross Cheerable Foundation will be the one we're due to be redemptive analogues upon Sage Creek Sage coming on, I'm sorry, Sulphur Creek on with a P L M. We're in the process right now of working out the timelines that we can close. Public, we announced the bid. We recently closed sixty-two thousand dollars, sixty-two thousand four hundred dollars in grants and included the grant funding for our forty for last year as well as the water, our only power back water grant. And we are presenting another hundred forty-five thousand or sixty-eight dollars in grant funding for the next year for end of twenty-three. And that does not include the waters that say we're working with level one waters to say you work with how to get funded it through the legislative. As soon as that goes final, we're worth a plan to get a hold of all the irrigation districts so everybody knows. So as public meetings come around, we'll get good involvement. So we get good resources for producers and irrigation districts and fidget associations.
One of the things we did talk to the Keeper of Conservation District about is as I goes forward and you wrote the C has the legislation, there is enough snow where it is. So we have it, it'll be there supportingly for legislators also.
It is, uh, we, February, the Slipwater Committee meeting has been passed for they don't expect on me, we'll get that for you and the rest of the meetings, I was actually going down for this one. We're not going to send any funds. Yeah, we have the petition and I am sure one signature is all. Thank you, partners for that. We typed something just morning and it's obvious for our doctor. So we have the petition for the Park County Commissioners opposing Conservation District tax placement electors within the twenty conservation district on May seventeen. You have three options for dates. Option one is primary, the general, or for some reason, the first. First or second Monday or Tuesday next following the first Monday.
Third Monday.
My third Monday. Tuesday next following the first Monday in May. For Tuesday next following the third Monday, August. So that would be a special.
Yes, so the Madam Chair, so you have the option as a primary, a general, or a special election.
Yeah, special election apparently has to be the mail ballot election.
Any thoughts?
Um, our thoughts are we got a, we have some part of our funding, we got a funding and actually got a approachers published by a third party, we have paper, so we did a letter and it's just some basic information that we are willing to go now. Hopefully next week, if not the week after, it's hilarious. Um, we had a lot of public contacts this last year. Outside prevent, but Facebook prevent, we have a sorry. I don't have one of them. So, but, um, we've done a lot of our utilities to talk to people, interface with people. We have quite a few tree orders in on the tree program. And our concern with, you know, it was a concern sex last time when we ran the electoral, ran the tax up is we don't want to be judged with a lot of taxes because the policy is to just say no. So if we do it by ourselves, we think we have a better chance because we're judged solely on people that are passionate one way or the other, definitively going to vote. And people that are in the, you know, lack of letters out there, it doesn't make any difference. They not vote or will be more likely to check into it at that.
So if I know that you're considering thinking about doing individual election, not primary or general?
Correct, the May seventeen, the mail in, mail out, uh, mail ballot election.
My question is, Pauline, what does that do for as far as expense to the county to hold a special?
I mean.
That's why you brought it up.
All right. Madam Chairman, Commissioner Thiel.
Thank you.
The, uh, I don't know exactly what a
The, uh, I don't know exactly what a, what a mail ballot election would cost us. A normal election is about 39,000 for a primary or a general election, depending on ballots, et cetera. So I really don't know what a mail ballot election might cost us. I really don't know. And having not had any forewarning, I could
39,000 for the dress estimate for a primary or general.
Right.
For an additional thing or total?
No, total. So, so Madam Chairman, Commissioner Thiel, so what? If they went on the primary or the general election, it would just be another question on our ballot. And it would be no additional cost of accounting for that election. So the, and the only additional cost that would be in the primary election is because it's their unaffiliated. It would be an unaffiliated type election. Then there would be in the Cody Conservation District, there'd be about 400 additional ballots that would have to be printed for or yeah, it's actually more like 600 additional ballots for unaffiliated voters who are outside the city limits. That would not normally get an unaffiliated ballot in the primary election because the primary election is a closed election. Meaning that however you affiliate, you affiliate a Republican or a Democrat, that's what ballots you get. Well, being an unaffiliated, nonpartisan election, then the unaffiliated voters who are outside the city limits would then have to be mailed out or not mailed out, but provided a nonpartisan or unaffiliated election ballot. So that's the primary. For the general, for the general election, it would just be another question on the general election ballot that everyone
My question is, and I know whatever you're going is you're requesting prefer preference would be a special election. And then any, I know that doesn't go countywide. It only goes within the district.
Right.
But it's still a cost. I, I know it's hard to pinpoint down, but we talked it 500 bucks, 5,000 bucks.
I'm Madam Chairman, Commissioner Thiel, I really, I, I can't, I can't put a number on that because I really don't know. I, I wish I could tell you, but I think that it would be greater than, greater than 500. I don't know that it would be less than 5,000. It may be greater than 5,000, less than 10,000. I, I really wish I could pinpoint a number, but again, not having any, any advance notice of this, I, I didn't, I don't have, didn't have the time or, or know to even come up with a number for it.
Just to clarify, it would be a mail out, which I'm assuming we have all the tax information to mail out for them. Because it's a tax question, is that pushing regulations for the county has to run the election? Because I know I did my own with Northwest River Water, mail-in judges and all that and had the county canvass it. But because it's a tax question, does the county have to do all the work?
I'd like to further study the, Madam Chairman, I'd like to further study the statute on that. Again, not having any forewarning about this, I can't pull that off the top of my head with certainty. And in a public meeting, I don't want to talk about that.
Just with the ballot, just be for one household or the members, would you go for registration at the last election? I would use determine where these ballots.
Madam Chairman, I believe because it's a special district, typical special district, it would not be a ballot that would go to landowners. It would be a ballot that would go to registered voters or registered voters. More than one household would be Yeah, I believe that's the case.
I mean, I'm very much in favor of getting back on ballot again. Right then, say your name right now, but then without knowing it. So my recommendation would be to do some more research and you probably can come back.
Possible to review this for the first of February meeting?
Yes.
Madam Chairman, that, yes, that is. The timeframe, it has to be into clerk 110 days before the election.
Coming up.
And we're coming up on it that way. Answer the question on, or do not run it. It does have to be clerked per the statute.
The timeframe is extremely tight right now. I beg your pardon?
Yes, Chairman, I have worked it backwards and 110 days back, bringing those to the 27th of January. Talking to our chairman today, we were going to submit this letter officially to the clerk on the 26th. So that doesn't mean 111 days prior. And that's on the mail-in, the mail-in ballot. Obviously, if it was a primary, it'd give us even more time there.
However, however, Madam Chairman, I do believe county commissioners have to approve that election. And so that would have to be, we would have to receive notice. And then the commissioners have to approve that election if I, if I understand correctly. Again, having no prior notice to this, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't speak to that specifically. But I believe if my memory serves correctly, that would be the case.
I understand what you just said. Is that track that they could turn the request in and then we can act on it?
Well, you would have to have a special, you'd have to have a special meeting.
That's, I mean, you can't wait till February 1.
I don't believe so. I don't believe so. Again. I really understand where Karen O'Phill is, is the request needs to be submitted to the clerk's office. I understand that before. They 110 days starts our, starts when we have to print the proclamation, I believe. And we have to be, we have to be on the road to the election rather than just receiving notice at 110 days. If I, again, I would like to be speaking in specifics right now. And I really can't. Because I want to, I want to be sure that I have it right before I that wouldn't be fair to Conservation District.
My eyes would be the overall, however, I mean, that's the least. I understand where you're going for. And you want people that are just interested mostly. Probably understand that. I do. At least in the sense that I would definitely support putting it on the ballot, but I would, I would recommend general. Maybe you guys have your reasons for not wanting to wait. That would be the easiest setting in my I don't see how discussion on this special election puts it approximately May 10th, correct?
May 17.
May 17. And, and there's no way we can get that done before our next, without a special meeting. And having, as soon as we could actually be February 1st.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioner Thiel, to your point about the two elections, this year we in a unique situation where municipalities will have two opportunities to get capital facility, special facilities, taxes on, they can go primary and/or the general. Whereas in previous years, with my understanding, they could either do one or the other. We're going to be restricted to one, is from what I understand in my reading, is municipalities can go. Essentially, if they can't get them the primary, they can put it on the general. And so it could potentially put us in a bind and a congested, people asking for tax. And then we're faced with this situation as Chairman Dwyer brought up, where people are just going down the line. No tax, no tax, no tax. Instead of looking at the situation, what the Conservation District is doing, what we're trying to do, and essentially, we're one of two unfunded districts in the state. Thank you.
Kind of at a standstill on not being able to make the deadline or anything. And if your only other two options are the primary or the general, that's a decision you might have to make. Or waiting till next year when you have the ability for a May. You can get going a little bit earlier and
Yeah, it was, most of it's my fault. I thought we had to till 3rd of February. Let me double check my math. We don't have till 3rd of February. So I, that one's, that one's on the dating.
Unless I haven't seen them up, go without a glimpse of info.
Oh, I do know that our math works all the constituents of the Cody Conservation District is running us a total of about $1,500.
Is that?
That is that's an envelope every house.
I was gonna say, is that per voter or per house?
About 27. I reduced our mailing list by about 27 by removing duplication of households with three kids and two spouses down the line.
Still looking at possibly doubling that mail because it would be per voter, not per house.
Our, our discussion with a couple of the districts at the state, they told us about five grand is what they spent.
And one of the added burdens of, sorry, one of the added benefits of the mail-in type election is we're not having to deal with polling places. Only judges outside of the county elections office and, and workers and things of that such. It's, everything gets mailed out, comes back in, but it's tallied here.
I am all, I mean, if, if that's, that's a come in cost for evady that, that we can get that, I'm all for it. Let it go forward on the, on the special election as long as I say it's not deadline and it's not going to cause a scarlet leg. Let's say maybe Hans can get some stuff, get some info for us.
Just, so we will just go to people in your district.
How does that, how do those get processed?
We will have to hire some because you're going to have to have a team to open these ballots and to and they're going to have to buy the stock, the ballot stock. Because in order for us to use the DS 200s to count all these unless, you know, I mean, it's all going to be done on ballot stock. And they're going to have to have special envelopes because they're all going to have to sign the envelope as a voter. They can't just return it in an envelope. So we need a special district envelope that they'll return again. And I know, I wish you hadn't left yet, but I know, I believe we had enough for Northwest River Waters special election, but we were not, like Hans said, not going to fight it this one. So I don't believe we even have enough special district envelopes and envelope orders have already gone in. But I mean, we'll see what we can do when we
When you ordered those envelopes, or
It's all through the Secretary of State. You're not allowed to go to any individual person and have these envelopes printed. It's all done by a certain printer. Same with the ballots. They go, go back to Minnesota.
And do we have that? When the ballots are returned? As far as, do they have to be returned by a special date or?
To be valid, there'll be a certain date that have to be returned by
Way off from our last election.
Yes, yeah. And, and like I said, I mean, we were, we could have, we could have done a little bit more planning. Special districts, we're, we're, I don't know, I call it fortunate in the state of Wyoming. We've never done one in my term. But there's counties that do them every year. They, every, even, even in the not year for a normal election, they hold special elections. We've just never had special districts come forth and want to do this kind of stuff, but yeah.
Well, like I said, we, Northwest River Water always did us, did our own. It was not a tax issue. It was a board member election type issue. And that can't be done. Mail ballot, same thing. We had dates and things to patch and envelopes and everything, but it did not have to go through
Right, because you were doing people. You were not doing a a tax issue or an issue that affects people and their household income and that type of stuff. Yeah.
Well, I guess let's see what we find out. If there's any possible way to make it, we'll try to make it. If there's not, I guess it's up to you all to figure out when. If you want to try the primary or the general, if that's your only other options for this year, there's no other dates for a or a mail-out election allowed?
No, not on the statute.
On statute.
Sorry, I couldn't give you that answer. Anything else or any other updates?
No, unless you have any questions for us.
I, I just have one comment. So on, on the thing that we're unfolding and all of that. So you're mailing that out. Do you want to wait and see what the special election holds? And maybe you'll want to mail it out a little bit later?
Um, based on the fact that most of it was grant funded, we can get it out because the goal was before spring of this year. So
Oh, got it.
I don't want to mess with the, well, the Department of Agriculture, the money that they gave us.
Oh, you understand that. I was just saying that we had to go to the primary, then maybe hold it off because it may be more refreshing people's mind. That was my only comment.
No.
So see, that's funny because most, most clerks knew already in, in October, November that they would be holding this special election in May.
Okay, 3 o'clock. We were going to take a look at a letter of support request for Central Air Service.
For Wilson Regional Airport is a, one of the 140 or 50 airports that qualified for essential air service. Started when President Reagan deregulated airlines. And you're guaranteed X amount of flights to the closest hub or whatever airline bid for that hub. And then in the past, we've actually had Delta, Salt Lake, and United had a bidder bid on this contract. It's a two-year contract with the Department, Federal Department of Transportation. They're going to work, United was the only bidder, but they do like to have letters of support. I know in the past, this board's always provided letters of support and probably had a copy of one in the past or something. But, and their bid was a teeny bit higher than last year. I think it's slightly under a million dollars for, over the two-year period. And it's for eight months from, I think it's October 1st to May 1st. And the thing is, we're like the second and third most profitable one for the fifth, they rent the least amount Most profitable one for the fifth, they write the least amount of checks for this one. Because we, especially in the summer of the flight, or in the spring, and and even up till January, the flights are full half the time, when they fly. For those of you that have got stuck and know where it is. But that's all, I think, the city of Cody's providing one, the Buffalo Bill, oh, I hate to call it wrong, Center of the West, every time I got it.
There you go.
Yeah, it's, they'll be providing one, and Cody Regional Health will be providing one, C wires providing one, airport providing one. And then they, they wanted them pretty fast, like by January twenty seventh, and they just awarded the bid to United. Or the bidding period closed like January ninth or something like this. And that's, we'll, we'll get our assurance.
I I I just have one comment, I I only feel towards the need for this because. Anyway, in the first line of the second paragraph, I would, I would like to reword that. In the past two years, we have enjoyed the excellent service of United Airlines.
You're welcome to put any, any, Madam Chairman, you, you, this, this board's welcome to put anything they want in that.
Okay, well, I will, I will move the way approved recommendation. Uh, yeah, I did take out the excellent service, maybe for the past few years, we've enjoyed service, service of United Airlines.
Have we enjoyed it though?
No, for, for, okay, for the past few years, we, we have had service from United Airlines.
Do I have a second? The move to the second to approve the letter of support for C wire. Any further discussion?
I have a comment, and I'm just gonna say it just because I don't want to sound hypocritical. Commissioner Hall was here for, for counties or the subsidies. I know this money is set aside pretty much, so somebody's gonna get it, mine on us, so I will support.
And Madam Chair, Molly, there's a link, and you guys just send it electronically to the DOT, and I think it was in that email. Before we gathered them up and sent a hard copy somehow.
Okay, when is, when is this, I have to speak to this.
Pretty soon, like.
Okay, I mean, we won't get it.
I can edit it right now.
She can edit it right now.
All right, yeah, if you want, if you want to run it, if you make that change real quick.
No, I just say we have, we have had service from, we have had service from, from United Airlines.
United Airlines for the past few years.
And just, if you, if I may, Madam Chairman, a, a quick update, as you aware from previous conversations, that Jackson. Whole airport would be closed for at least three months. And we argued in email, that whine and cry bitterly to tell us how the sky west. And to some degree, Alaska Airlines, no, like, we, one hand, we like to help you, but on the other hand, forget. And, but United will be diverting two flights here, so starting April, I think the first of April, we'll, we'll have four flights again. We're still working them, but the last email I sent to the guy at Delta was like, what bother, he was polite. Then pilots aren't gonna fall out of the skies. Okay, thank you very much.
We were consulting out in the hallway, and we found the state statute, because I think there may have been some erroneous information. I'm not saying anything for the various reasons, but it may be a statute that for clerk in the elections, I'll straight up be aware of. And I'd just like to close that all to a well for reconsideration. The statute I'm referring to is eleven sixteen, one thirty four, imposition of tax, semi-colonial, quote, of a likely required. In paragraph B, it says, the proposition to impose a tax under this act shall be at the expense of the county and may be submitted to the voters of the county. Upon the receipt by the Board of County Commissioners of a petition requesting the election signed by a majority of the supervisors of the districts. The election shall be at the direction under the supervision of the Board of County Commissioners. The a hundred and ten day issue comes up for special district. We have to notify the clerk a hundred and ten days prior of our intent to want to do this. The approval comes from the county commissioners, it is not under the same time act that the special district is under. So what I bring up is, we submit our petition to the county clerk and the commissioners. Prior to that hundred and ten day mark, and then you all could, if you would all see fit to, approve it at your next meeting or disapprove, but take it under consideration.
Ask you this, if we were to do something like that or consider the election. We, I'm sure that obviously the elections, I just have no idea right now what this person. So if we were to approve something like that, in my mind, it would have to be contingent on. You all putting the entire bill, no matter what it is.
What I also. I'm sorry, Commissioner Field, excuse me, Chairman Field, if I could just, I can answer your question there. There is another state statute, twenty two, twenty nine, one fifteen, mail ballot elections definition is a general provision. Under sub-paragraph D, and I was gonna skip to the end here, a special district may, by rule or by law. Pay the return postage of mail and absentee ballots. In conversation with my fellow supervisors on this year, if the mail levy proposal was acceptable by the voters. The district would then have the money and the capability to reimburse the county for the. The return postage of the absentee ballots. Statutorily, the county would have to pay for the election. But statutorily, the special district would be allowed to pay for the return postage and absentee ballots. So if we were to get that mail levy, we would have the funds available to reimburse the county for that. For that portion, so the county wouldn't be absorbing the full expense.
I just want that, what, from what I understand is they can petition if you will to, for this, but we don't have to make a decision today. Even for, they just have to notify formally, like, that they're out there as well. And then, and and as well as to us, but we don't decide anything until possibly the first of which time we will have numbers. And we can decide at that time, whether it be for, right now, their data is wanting to get their intent to the clerk's election office as well, so is that correct?
That, that's my understanding of that.
So we don't make any decision on that right today.
Come back if you're. If I could, the only comment I have to make on that, I'm not saying you're wrong, it's a competition as well. But I think statutes are open and competition, I didn't really talk to county attorney about his interpretation of the statute, just to make sure we do it right.
So my, my, my suggestion would be safe to submit the petition. And then we're gonna move forward, so I mean, the very worst case scenario is we can't do anything about it. The best case scenario is you've submitted the petition within the hundred and ten day timeframe, and then if we're able to act on it, can act on it. That'd be my, that'd be my suggestion.
And then moving forward to the district. We go through the rulemaking process of the notification and the adopted rule that moving forward with this special, special mail-in election. That if approved, we will. We will reimburse the county for those items which they talked about, return postage and absentee ballots for that expense, if approved.
And that can sound like that can come up later, we don't have to decide that today.
So I I just, to answer the questions that came about earlier, yeah, they're in statute force.
Everybody understand that where we're going right now, then, if they turn that in, then we'll get some answers, but right now, on February first. Our meeting is February first, and right now, we'll just pencil something to figure out what we're doing. As far as the trying goes, we'll get some answers.
And we will get that other supervisor's signature on the petition, and we will get it to the clerk.
I just want to add, you know, aside from the dollar amount, we need to verify that it is even logistically possible to get these envelopes and ballots from the state in that short amount of time.
Yeah.
Correct? So I mean, if that doesn't happen, money isn't.
Sorry, Mr. Retired, retired soldier, we've never said that, but. Thank, thank you for hearing a reconsideration on that, and I look forward to the information, thank you very much.
Could you get all the pens and tell them we don't need that information?